I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hasker.
I'm here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Einman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderman Armbruster. Mayor Walter Quaram.
Very good, thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes us down to the city administrators' report. You're up, Patty.
We've got an update, and I set up your seats. Item one. I've kind of got to get a feel for what this board likes or doesn't like. So I've got a request from a resident on Seraphim Street. They want us to install a child at play sign. I think we have a couple around town. Because they're worried about people speeding on the street. It's a 20 mile an hour zone. And they're concerned that drivers aren't paying attention to the kids. The kids are out, whatever, running from the yards, running out of the driveways. They're worried that they're going to be hit because the drivers aren't slowing down, aren't paying attention. So the feeling is that if we put a sign up like that, people will slow down and pay attention. My opinion is that I don't think they're effective. I think it's just distracting a driver. But I don't know what this board wants us, or how we want to pursue this in the future on something like this, and whether we want to do this. So if we put one as you come in off of Fourth Street, and then another one as you come in maybe off Main Street, you try to slow that traffic down, or as you come in off St. Mary's, you know, however you want to look at that. But the, one of the opinions that a fellow city administrator got from his insurance company was, how do the drivers know to drive? Why are they driving any differently? Why are they thinking that they're driving any differently? They should be cautious, watching for kids, watching for animals, whatever. You know, if something comes out on the street, they should be watching for it. So putting children at play signs, or child at play signs, isn't effective. What's effective is the police department enforcing the speed limit. And I've sent a note to the, or emailed to the chief to do that, to have a little more, you know, have increased visibility up there. So, but if there are other opinions, or, you know, if you look at it a different way, please, please chime in.
Gary, or, go ahead. Gary, Gary had his hand up.
I just had a request for another one on Cedar Lane, and I wanted to throw that out there, too.
I did not call it a law.
You know, I'm going to be a supporter of safety. You know, I don't think there's any issues with it. We see school zone signs, we seen other signs, you know, around and stuff. But one of the things that was brought to my attention, actually again today, was I guess there's a situation with some bicycles in that vicinity up there that are a lot of times left real close to the road.
That's true, because I went by, I got a call today.
I did, too.
On the corner, there was a little tricycle, and there was one in the corner lot.
Right.
You know, so.
You know, and, I mean, that's a parent's job is to monitor that, but bicycles shouldn't be left there. But that definitely increases the opportunity for something to happen if kids go out to get on their bicycle. And of course, naturally, it's easier to ride it in the street than it is in the yard. You know, but I don't know what the cost of a couple of signs are, but I think in certain areas where there is a higher number of kids, you know, maybe lack of access to playgrounds or something. I mean, to me, I don't think it's a big deal to put up a couple of signs.
Well, and I think, too, down there is a, it's a little bit of a higher traffic area on that corner of Seraphim and St. Mary's. You know, you got people coming through there and, you know, kind of trying, probably going to have more, too, with the National Park Service, people traveling out that road, you know, come off Seraphim, I don't know how much traffic that gets. But I'm, my, my opinion on signs are that they're, you can put them up, but they get to be where nobody even sees them, because you go by them so many times, you know, so.
I'd be curious to find out what the board's opinion is, if they're, if we're concerned about our children, and we think people are speeding through, and our police do a great job to begin with. But what are our thoughts on speed bumps? If we're that concerned about this, maybe we should think about putting speed bumps periodically. I know that there's a lot of signs, stop signs, for example, down Main Street, that they roll through, where they don't even stop. So I'm wondering if we're going to take this seriously, do we think about putting signs up, or do we put speed bumps up?
I'd be more for increased enforcement first, trying that.
Which is a zero call, step toward.
Right. And it's not, and, and it can be as permanent as we need it to be. And I think once people get used to the enforcement being up, if they regularly travel on that street, they're going to start paying attention to how fast they're going and who's around them.
Well, we got a policeman lives down on that street.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, we do.
I'd like to have his opinion on this, which I had him here, Ryan. He's got, his kids are down there, he's got three, three kids, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was brought up earlier that, you know, does a child at play sign take away from the signs that would specifically call out, like, a deaf child at play, to where if you get too used to a sign there, you don't notice a more, I don't want to say more important sign, but a more important sign in terms of, you know, just caution for the child, so.
Well, I know personally, I'm going to pay about one ticket, and I'm going to slow down.
Yeah.
So if we're looking for the most effective route, I'd, I'd vote for stepped up enforcement there, but.
I mean, I also, but I, I don't think a sign hurts anything. I don't think it, speed bumps, I don't know if we have any speed bumps on a city street, but, I mean, it slows you down, especially if you hit it once.
All it would take is one time.
But, you know, what if that child's on the other side of the speed bump, and, I mean, there's no for sure answer, but my vote would be a combination, combination of enforcement and possible sign. You know, and we can put the signs up and take them down occasionally to get rid of some of that monotonous, you know, but, you know, you're talking about predominantly a residential area there. You almost have to be living there. There's not a real reason they need to go through there, but, you know, but with the national parks and additional traffic, it's only going to get worse.
So you might have a number of signs that are roving signs.
Yeah.
You move them as needed. I don't hate that idea.
In most cities I've been in, the signs go in, they stay, you never, they never get moved, you know, kids, kids move away and.
But we can be different.
Yeah. Put that on schedule.
I had a request from a resident who just moved in at the corner of Athan and, no, yeah, Athan and Market. She said, could you guys put up a stop sign there, slow these people down? She said, they're, they're driving way too fast past my house. I'll bring it up. But we tried it in other places, as the people, you know, agree with. And it, we tried them and did a, a short time, you know, of having them up, and then we moved them there.
Did it help?
Well, it didn't, yeah, we didn't, we took them down again. One good, I guess, one good example would have been down at Washington and Main. We, we had them up for a short time, and then decided it wasn't a good idea to put them back down. It was a trial period. I told her I didn't know about doing that.
Eric, you got any thought on this, Patty?
We put, as far as the last, the last complaint, we put the speed trailer out there. The previous owners of that same house had a complaint there. We put the speed trailer up, which actually documents all the speed, and we didn't have anybody that was, that was doing high enough to stop. I mean, they were all right in the 30 to 35 range. Maybe that's because the speed trailer was there. But, I mean, all of our enforcement there, it is a 30 mile an hour zone on Market, which is faster than most streets in town.
Didn't it break to 25, Randy?
It breaks to 25, but that's closer here to the, to the PD.
Oh, right, at the eighth street.
Right there at Fifth. No, at Fifth Street, it changes to 25. We could, we could look at changing that to 20, but, I mean, we, we have guys in the, in the area, and it's just, we've not seen any, they were complaining about cars doing 40, 50 miles an hour up through Market Street. We've never had any, any evidence of that, driving or, or speed trailer data. So, I mean, we, was it to be more visible when we're in these areas? And, and like you said, maybe, maybe after a couple of invitations, we'll, we'll slow down.
Chief, how many, how many of those trailers do you have?
We don't have any. The Sheriff's Department has one that they are gracious enough to let us use sometimes. They come out and place it and maintain it and everything. We, we don't have any speed.
Once upon a time, there was a hot drive Malibu over near Claymont.
Yeah.
I understand that operation's been shut down, but it was effective for said driver.
Yeah.
Not that I'm her dad, but yeah.
We had, we had it up there for a while. We, we moved a few places in town. We had it on Portus for a while. Like I said, maybe, maybe it just deters while it's there. You know, maybe we can look at a, a couple of the permanent signs that are actually road signs that, that give the speed. I'm sure they're, they're expensive, but maybe in some of these areas that we have a lot of problems, have a permanent sign that has that radar indication what the speed is.
Is that trailer only set to give the speed, or, I mean, can it flash a, a sign to slow down children there?
They can, uh, no, it will, you can program at what point it changes the message. So it'll show the speed. Some, some, you, you can just show whatever speed, but that almost seems like a contest for somebody. Well, we'll see how fast we can go. So most of them just programmed to, you know, once it hits the speed limit, then it starts changing to slow down, or red and blue flashing light or something to indicate that they're over the speed limit. But I, there may be some that, that can change the message, the one that the Sheriff's Department has to just not.
I would, you know, like to see if there is a sign, you know, maybe we could acquire that would flash a sign, and maybe we could move it around if it's not, you know, I mean, one child, it's a big deal.
Very good deal.
Big deal, so, maybe we could check.
Something like that you could mount on an existing sign, and I have to worry about calling Diggright every time, if it's something that we're wanting to move, you know, something that actually affixes to the sign.
And I think it may be, you've got a battery pack or, or generator or something.
Some more solar, solar powered?
Yeah. But then you're having to attach that, and you still got a battery that's going to run.
Yeah.
So it's not just, where you just easily move it around. We have to, we have to locate where, where to put them. But we can look into some safety, safety measures like that, I'm sure. But are we looking at putting up signs, or are we looking at other measures first?
Well, I mean, explore all the avenues, look at something like that, and then, I mean, we already said that, you know, increased patrolling's not going to cost us anything, so.
And I really do agree with Ashley that if you put up a bunch of children at play signs around town, then people are just not going to notice.
And to give credit where it's due, it was David that had mentioned it.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, we have them hidden back there.
Yeah.
Are you due to get back with a resident on Seraphim?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to call it, call it, Ma. I'll let them know.
Could we have consideration, maybe get that trailer again?
I'll talk to the sheriff.
To speak to what Gary was talking about earlier with speed bumps, are there such things like temporary speed bumps that we could potentially?
That's the.
They make rubber ones, you can screw it to the ground.
But most insurance companies don't want you doing that, and I don't know what our insurance company will say.
Yeah.
I'll ask. The ones that I've seen are incorporated, and they're about 15 to 20 feet long. It's not the parking lot speed bump, it's a larger version of that, so you're not hitting it like you would in a parking lot. So it's for the 15 to 20 mile an hour range. But I'll check. Okay, moving on. Park Service, item seven, Park Service has been resetting the Welcome Center these past couple of weeks. Missilehorn Prince has moved across the street to the JV Valley House, and the video now is in that Missilehorn room. So they're isolated, so it's not playing to the whole audience up there. We pulled out cabinets, we pulled out the couch, and the love seats have already been removed, and that's coming up with our consent agenda on what to do with those. And item eight, sales tax report is in from the state. Want to give a report? We've been lucky. We have exceeded our budgeted amount for fiscal year by about $29,000. So compared to many cities, we are very fortunate. We still spend wisely, but we, we feel very confident in the next year. About as confident as what we get four months ago, five months ago, so. Look, you need to keep in mind, too, we're not out of the woods yet.
No.
It's going to be a long process, and, you know, we're in an election year, and things could change, you know, and, and so, we have been very fortunate. Any questions? Comments? Okay.
I think the sign that said, please slow down, and we'll return the puddles if we fix my scoop.
There you go.
All right. Chief Steiger, you're up. Your staff reports.
Good evening, everyone. Your tax report. Probably the biggest thing to announce is we did.
Sign up three new people a couple of weeks ago, and working on it. We're still too short of our regular roster, with potential losing a few more that we have on probation right now.
Wait, can I ask the age of these, sir?
We have a 24, a 38, no, 42, I believe it is, age-wise. So a variety.
Where's the woman, the guy that wants to join up, like, the guy that's 25, 50, he can?
We can find the space for him.
Very good.
Actually, what we do with the older, older guys, we teach them how to run the pumpers.
Yeah.
The older guys get to learn how to drive the trucks and run the trucks, so they don't have to be actual firefighters.
Wow.
Well, that's good news. That is good news.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, congratulations.
And we have been working on the LED lighting. We got most of the administration end of the building done. They're quite a bit brighter. It's amazing, and we're waiting, waiting to get the bay done. Hopefully, that's going to be really nice out there. And it's going to be instant on compared to the ones we have now that take a while to warm up and everything, so that's a, a big plus for us. I did put in here that we had our ladders tested. I was working with Happy on that. In the past, we've never really certified our ladders, so it kind of covers us, that we had somebody come in and do the certifications on them, so now I have paperwork showing that they were certified. The one ladder we had that did have a problem was a minor technicality, one hook, our, the hooks on this thing are too small a diameter, but it's an easy fix, so we'll be able to get that certification. So if anybody were to get hurt, we could say that they were tested and they were certified, which included our ladder truck, too. And we did a walk-through myself and Assistant Chief Bynell with the new museum the other day, and they had some questions from the fire department standpoint on sign placements and things like that. Whatever I couldn't answer or Bob couldn't, we referred him to David, so Dave took care of the, the rest of the questions that we had. I'd be open for any questions that you guys might have.
I'm not programmed to do business, but I just got to get some people.
Yeah, we've got some that have been bought and haven't been installed. One local apartment complex, I think they lost their maintenance guy, and Dave's going to talk to them tomorrow. Couple other ones, one of them was concerned because he has a metal building and wasn't sure how well that would stay in place, if he just used sheet metal screws, so he was trying to find some kind of fastener, but I think it probably sat on his desk long enough that he forgot about it. And that was an optional one. He was already existing, so we really couldn't force the issue with him. Slowly but surely, we're gaining momentum on it, and it's going to be a good thing for us.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Next question.
Hello. Got my report there in front of you. There's not a whole lot to report. You can see on the Heritage Commission, we're moving along on the Shippensburg grant that got approved a few months back, so we have responses due next week to kick that off. Down at the bottom, I talked about this last meeting, focus, instead of the 2018 focus properties, just talking about the number of nuisance and code violations. That number fluctuates day to day, but that was the snapshot on the day that I gave you this report, so, about it. Any questions?
What kind of building code nuisance issues are there?
Uh, the building code nuisance issues?
Yeah, that's last time.
Those range from, I mean, we've got a building where a wall is coming off, it's not going to fall down, but it's coming off. Chimneys that are about, you know, need tuck pointing, things of that nature. Old permits that they're, they got permission to do a bunch of work, it was unoccupable, and now the permit is getting to where it's expired, so we keep working with those folks to get those code violations corrected. Some of those are minor, but it needs to be done.
Right.
So the only, instead of six, there's actually five, and the only one that's really concerning is the one where there's a wall coming apart. It's an occupied vacant building, and the owner's aware, and that may be one where we end up boarding that structure up, because the owner is cooperative, but probably not willing to solve the problem.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys got my report? We did some more cleanup on Chadwell from the storm. We still have a little more to do, just kind of getting that in our little bit of free time we can manage. Worked on the service more, cleaned storm drains, did some weed spraying. Started painting intersections and crosswalks. I think we're down to one intersection left.
Yes, that helps out a lot. That's really good.
Started painting yobalines, we're maybe halfway through that. Laid out and painted the soccer fields. Cut some brush along the guardrail up on North Fourth Street. We moved the display cases and the couch from the Welcome Center. Burnt the brass side. I did put on here, I forgot, we did get a lot of the tree limbs cut back for Buck.
Yeah.
And, and the low hanging limbs, so.
You guys did a lot of work down in the trees, did you?
Yeah.
On, like, the same area or whatever.
We did some down there, yeah. With the trestle.
Which storm grades here?
All of them around town.
All of them. Good job. All the sinkholes are in good shape, those rates of them?
We need to get in there with a piece of machinery again and carry everything out.
Okay.
You know, it's just a matter of keeping them clean, throwing it off, and we get in there like once a year with machinery and actually pull it out of there.
Got you. Okay.
Gary, have we established a regular, with the trash cans downtown, like a regular routine?
We try to get them, you know, on Monday mornings, like last week, we hit it on Friday, and again on Tuesday. We got a couple of cans that are being used for personal use, that fill up rather quickly, especially over like a three-day weekend, so.
Where are those cans located?
On Merchant Street.
Is that something we can try and enforce or keep an eye on a little more? Because I know at least a couple of those have been years, same people, years.
Is it, is it big bags of trash that they're throwing in?
No, it'd just be like, you know, grocery store bags.
I was going to say, can you make it a little smaller and clear to the vision?
You're not happy, you best to be trash finding neighbor, huh?
You want to get in there.
Yeah, you get in there, oh, yeah.
You probably, you need something else. I don't think we, you might be able to do it through, like, a game camera or something. I don't know how to, how to catch them.
I don't know how they're going to remedy the situation.
Their names are on the trash in, you know.
Oh, really? Gary, I don't know how they're going to fix the situation, but I want to thank you for the quick turnaround. We, we called and we, we asked for some help, and you guys are out there, you guys and Gales are out there taking care of us, so thank you so much.
And just a little bit more additional praise there. Since you last gave your report, I think we parked playground officially.
Yeah, I thought I had that in last month.
I, I think it was still needed to gravel at that point.
But it is up and running, and there's going to be a dedication October the 10th.
Yeah, okay. And then I, I just wanted to relay, I've heard a lot of positive feedback from that playground opening, so.
It's getting used constantly on weekends.
Yeah, your team did a big job.
Thanks.
Yeah, it is.
So it's, it's been a great addition out to that park, so.
Yep.
Getting, getting back to that trash issue, just briefly, if, it's pretty obvious who's doing this. Can we at least send them a letter? Thank you. Start that.
That's great.
Thanks, Gary.
That's good.
Well, you know, at least it's.
That's good.
Put a sign up at our house.
That's kind of wild.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you very much, sir.
Toby.
Oh, yeah, then you drive. Come back there. You know where it is. You've been there.
I also want to praise Gary and Steve and those guys for the work they did to Welcome Center to help get the display cases out and get it ready for the National Park Service to move some exhibits in.
Yeah.
And I actually just wanted to be here in case people were hearing anything about the Welcome Center, things going on, moving down there. I know there's a lot of concern expressed about the artwork that I heard about, and the goal is to have that on display at the JV Valley House across the street. Should be both the Missilehorn artwork that the city owns, their NPS is also working with the Art Guild, or the Women's Club, who owns the Art Colony artwork, and working with Carolyn Bach about making sure that's displayed also. I think on my notes I had that there'd be an Arrowhead unveiling this week, but that was delayed, so hopefully it'll be coming soon, and maybe rolled in with the announcements about being established as a park, so hopefully those announcements are coming soon. And just to let people know about some upcoming events, so there's a car cruise coming through the county this weekend. We're expecting about 80 cars to come through tomorrow through the city, and then they're going to stay in Cape Girardeau tomorrow night, and they're supposed to come back through the county on Saturday. They don't really have a set schedule of where they're going to be and where they're going to go, but, so they'll be driving around the county, probably check out the wineries and some other businesses this weekend. And French Colonial America is bringing Dr. Charles Bellici to speak at the Welcome Center. That'll be on Wednesday, is it Wednesday night?
Yes.
Yeah, 23rd of September. So they can make arrangements to see him through French Colonial America. Are there any questions, Ryan? Yes?
Toby, with the, the conversion of the Welcome Center, I mean, as far as liability on the building and property and, and physical insurance, I mean, what is?
Those are good questions.
You know, is that coming up? Our costs and when?
It's not coming up at this point until there's transfer ownership. At this point, it's a shared space, and we're paying insurance.
So if one of their employees are injured there or falls or something, it's our liability, then?
It'd be the same as any, any individual that's hurt over there.
Okay, okay. But we have a timeframe when that will change?
We have to get established, and then we're looking at probably on the outside two years. It's a process for the government to go through and do a, a number of surveys, but I, we're getting closer.
So you're, you're recording a visitor count?
Yes.
For this last pager report?
Yeah.
You capture this data, so what can you do with it? What, what is your plan?
Well, part of it is provided also to the businesses and historic attractions in the community, so that they can kind of get an assessment of the weekday traffic and the weekend traffic, and a little bit also about where we're growing. We do also take other data when people are coming in in terms of where they're coming from and how they've heard about us, so we collect all that data as well. I mean, hopefully it helps us make decisions on what we're going to do with our marketing plan in the future. This is kind of, this, with that data there, just trying to show kind of that there's a bit of recovery going on. I think importantly for us, you know, some of the people express when they come into I think importantly for us, you know, some of the people express when they come into Welcome Center that they do pay attention to the COVID data and that's been pretty effective for us, that the county has been, can control the situation in terms of how the COVID situation is in the county and I think that has helped in bringing visitors come here and feel comfortable about what they can do here.
Very good.
But this is just the numbers of people that actually come in the center, this is not a representation of everybody who comes.
To the city. So on a day like the, when the disc golf tournament was in town, I mean, there were 90 disc golfers at the park, but we had a pretty slow day of traffic at the Welcome Center. Ideally, they contributed to the economy some, they, I know Ciro's went up there and sold pizza and I think they probably went to other restaurants for lunch, so, and hopefully dinner too. Thanks.
Brings us to our next agenda, item is COVID discussion. I wanted to see that on our agenda.
Yep. I don't really have a whole lot to add, but with Halloween coming up before too long and the holiday season in general, if the, if the health department releases any information, I'd like to see that relayed by city officials and backup, because I think there's going to be some members of the community that are asking how do we celebrate these holidays and I know it's a weird thing to bring up Halloween and stuff, but it is actually written into our ordinance, the day of celebrating Halloween and whatnot, so I don't think it's too far off base for us to chime in on that, so if discussions with health department lead us to any information that we can cite in public for best practices. With this, of course, we don't want to limit anybody from enjoying the holidays, but there are probably things we can recommend to be smart about it. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there for us to be.
Well, all we can do is lean on the health department, you know, so.
Yeah, and so I think it's just making sure our communication is in lock with them.
Right, right, that's a good thought.
But I mean, if we suggest to follow the CDC's requirements or recommendations, you know, is that?
Well, and the important thing to remember about the CDC is they have to put everything out there for any potential situation and in a lot of ways, from my understanding, is you have to read through their list and figure out what best applies for your circumstances because this community might differ from that community or their situations. Best practices are best practices, but when you're able to wear a mask and when you're not, it might be different in certain circumstances, so they're just saying whatever the CDC says might not be the best relay of communication. I think our county would have to be a little bit more specific on that.
Do we know if the health department's going to make a recommendation specific to Halloween and trick or treat?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think they're still figuring their stuff out, they, I saw in the paper they made an appointment.
Yeah, they have a new director, has a Tuesday, so she started Tuesday, so.
So they've got a lot of stuff I'm sure to work out, but if there's any kind of communication, I just wanted to kind of highlight, I'd like to make sure the city relays that.
Well, I think when you generalize everything too, is when, this is a very local event, Halloween and kids are down, you know, and if you don't want to be, don't turn your light on, so there are protections that the homeowners can take and there again, personal responsibility, you know, so.
Yeah.
And I, we'll talk to the health department and find out.
And I don't disagree with those, it's just, I just wanted us to be wary, because I know as we get closer, it's not unlikely that at least one of us is going to get calls from the community saying, you know, I can't believe you're allowing trick or treating or something like that.
But yeah, I, you know, we're back at, we've got football games going on and we've got fans going to football games today. From what I understand, Nally's game tomorrow night is, there's going to be no limit on people going there, so.
And again.
I don't know if the health department has weighed in on that or that, apparently they haven't.
And again, I don't disagree, I just wanted us to, if there is any kind of information at the city, because specifically Halloween is written into our ordinance.
Sure, right, absolutely.
It's not going to be unfathomable for us to face the question, I'd like us just to make sure our communication is unified on that.
So now, in all our means of communication?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is going to be out of our hands because we can't control everybody.
But there's things that we, that can go out on Facebook and the city page and things that we can say, you know, so.
Yeah, so.
It's a good thought. Everybody up to date on the numbers, having a problem tracking them or, I think we had some, I don't know, newspaper last week, I didn't read a lot of it, but I was told the newspaper was supposed to have some discussion about it and do numbers, I had to talk to Mark about that, but I get my numbers every day off Sun Time News, every day, you know.
Many health department updates Facebook every day at four.
Four o'clock, okay.
And I do appreciate that the city put something on social media after the last meeting. I still think it would be great if we had some, something official, a proclamation, something that, that made it a little more clear where we stand.
Well, there's, all we can do is make a recommendation, we can't, I think we're limited, we can't just say, well, you're going to do this.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm saying some sort of a proclamation urging people to continue with social distancing, continue with wearing facial covering.
Like a letter and printed in the paper as in its current form.
Something a little more official than just a Facebook post.
Which is a step in the right direction.
Right.
Well, then in particular, like you said, with Halloween, Halloween coming up, are we, you know, are we saying we're going to have, you know, have it and observe it on a certain day, you know, and we suggest all of these measures?
Well, and it is on a Saturday this year.
Right, which will mean more.
And it is a holiday where people, you tend to wear masks in a lot of ways.
They just have holes in them.
Sure, so, I mean, I wouldn't stand for canceling it if anybody were to try to press me on that.
You know, and the fact that Paul bought up, I like, you know, if you don't want people in your home or on your property, don't turn your light on.
Well, that's what you do.
And I think there's maybe a statement that we can put out on the social media channels just reminding of the ordinance, do not go to how homes that do not have lights on, which is specifically spelled out in there, because it never fails that you have your light off, somebody's going to come knocking.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think it's just more just putting the information out there and people can't say they didn't see it and, you know, nobody ever say anything and we travel.
Maybe we can consider our friends at the Herald to put something in there also to accomplish that.
Any other discussion? Takes us to committee reports. You'll be doing a big one here a little later on, won't you?
Yeah, we'll hit most of it in the work session. Other than that, I think we got a special meeting on the 15th to further discuss and keep the momentum going on the planning. We have a few people that are interested in potentially filling the vacancies on the board, so other than that, we'll have a big discussion here in the work session.
Are there any public comments? I see none, so we'll take this to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We have no old business, but we'll go right on into new business. Bill number 4384, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board, channel 990 slash 991.
Paul, just a brief question about that, can you remind me what that dollar amount is?
Thirty-nine thousand.
Okay. Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, takes us to bill number 4385, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2020 budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to first reading of bill number 4386, an ordinance of the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, approving the annual budget for fiscal year 2021 and approving an effective, in approving an effective date.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to bill number 4387, an ordinance, St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, Chapter 230, Solid Waste, Article 1, General Section 230 dot 030, prohibited practices that set forth below.
Move to approve.
I'll second, but can we have some discussion?
Well, sure.
Chief Steiger, did you have any input about the change in the burning?
As long as they're following the regulations of the actual burn permits that we usually issue and I'm notified that it's happening and it's not an every week occurrence, I wouldn't have a problem with it. There's emergencies where people get overloaded, they just need help.
So what we would like to do is in case of a big storm event, we would just declare open burning for the next week, two weeks, et cetera?
Yeah, just as long as we're made aware of it, so we don't run around seeing smoke and figure out what's going on and as long as they follow the burn regulations that are set forth in the burn permits, I'm good with it.
Okay, and how do we, how do we, once we vote on that, how is the fire department officially notified?
So we would tell them when you pass the ordinance, if the chief's not here, we would pass that on.
Okay.
I mean, it would be the same as what you've done in the past years on, in March and November when you've had open burning, so we'd notify them, tell them that's what we got going on and then we just put out there, you know, here are the regulations, please follow these items and hope that your residents do that.
You know, in another community, we do business, the first step is you have to call the fire department before there's ever any process started and then there's some kind of internal communication between the fire department and the city saying yea or nay and then the permit is finally issued then.
That's a full-time fire department. Yeah, that's what I was saying, that's probably Farmington, a full-time fire department, so that might be a little bit difficult, you know, if he cheats on his other job or volunteers, so.
Yeah, it is, right.
Still, we, I think we got a good process in place and anytime, any fire can get out of, out of control, so there again, we have to be mindful of that. If it doesn't work, then we go back. Yeah, right. So we have a first, we have a first on that?
And a second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other business? Can we communicate? All right, if there's no other business, we'll call this meeting adjourned and move into our work session. Well, let's see.
Good to see you too.